I'm very busy.
House, uh, I'm afraid that some of their workers sleep, break their backs and I take their profits with tax, tax, tax.
Say you.
Shut up.
Personally offended by it. Just 'cause I have a lock, so I spent my office.
Do you have the Grinch out now?
Yeah.
We're live.
I just put it up yesterday, then I opened the paper this morning.
What did you call your wife?
The most beautiful woman I know.
I didn't say you recorded.
Excellent decision.
Good answer.
Are you Larry?
That's supposed to be smart.
Are you the Grinch?
Pick them clothes down, all those, it's a little over 5,000 sayers.
Larry is the Grinch. See the S.
Okay. So busy fixating on yourself.
I'm not a big sports fan.
Do you want a copy of this to look at Larry?
But the rest of it, not much.
I did see the picture of the seventy, seventy year old lady in the spot. That might have been on the internet. Can deadlift 225 pounds?
Are we ready?
Sure.
Of course, I've never. I haven't taken any of the Mac and just Boris and Indians I ever seen. I've always. If we're interested, we have to go.
Not too bad.
That's C Cam, right? Okay, you said Mac.
Uh, other than our computer.
I don't know yet. I doubt I'd stay up there. But let me see the dates are. Whoa, whoa, this is gonna cost you.
He said he wanted to be first, I'm ready to go.
Where's this at? Where was this at when we were elected officers for camp?
All right, can I call in the commission to order?
I need a little help about the camp.
Do we need minister reports?
All right. Are there any commissioner committee liaison reports or announcements, upcoming meetings and/or events? Living windows is tomorrow night. The Christmas parade is Saturday. Protests are tomorrow afternoon.
Yes, don't be calling me.
Or I assume you're going to Lynn to start walking.
I ain't messing with those H County.
You catch him at the border?
Rosebud with a beer in his hand. And the hat on backwards.
I did not throw anything at that bus though.
Okay, so.
Cole County extension tonight if you want to come out and see what we do there. Five fifteen or something like that.
We have an ED stakeholders meeting today that we're gonna go from here at 11 to. So, everybody who's on the agenda, just as an FYI, at 11 o'clock. We're about five till 11. We're all standing up and leaving. So, let's be quick and efficient because we do have to move pretty quickly today.
This was on the agenda first.
So.
Didn't ask me if I was gonna be able to.
All right. Due to other external meeting commitments, Larry is asked to go first, so we'll do the Frog Hollow Road Improvement Project Change Order.
Okay, one part of that is a budget. And then the Detroit City County account for 14,500. Go talk to you about this one. That's to get enough funds in to cover the change order. Um, the change order, this is for final closeout. If you look on the last sheet of that, you should have in your packet there, it's got a detail of the over and under on the bid items and then the change order items at the very bottom. And the total amount of the change order addition to the original contract is 43,070.77 cents. And I recommend approval of this. Is there any questions about any of the items?
Where's my packet?
Should be emailed.
Or you can look at this.
So. I haven't gotten to it yet, but what, uh?
I got a couple of questions real quick. I noticed that a fair amount of this has to do with the sewer and the manholes.
Yeah.
I assume that's the city's portion of the project. We don't have to pay for that, so why are we transferring money for that?
Well. We held the contracts we gotta pay out. When we do the transfer fund between the city and us, we'll figure out what the actual final is of cooperative and final for sewer. And it'll go back and forth, however, it needs to, to even up. We have to have the funds in the account to pay the government.
So, we're gonna move 14,5 over from contingency. And then approve this change order, and that basically closes the project, and then you guys are gonna sit down and the city's gonna pay us back whatever they owe us?
Debbie has been billing them as the project's progressed, and so when the final amount comes in, she'll just send them a final bill for whatever they owe.
Okay. Works for me.
So Debbie, you said half?
Half, everything but the sewer.
But the sewer, the sewer's kept out, and we'd kept an original estimated amount out upfront, but whenever we actually have actual quantities, now that it's all said and done, we'll figure what that actual amount is. Reshuffle the numbers and make it all work out in the end. So Debbie's kept up on it and in contact constantly on it with the city.
So the 43,000. It looks to me like almost half of that is sewer related?
There's, of the overrun of bid item numbers, there's 18,000. And then change order items, there's 24. There's a pretty big one for tree removal, that's also related. The spread footing for the box cover, that would be road related. Up at the top, the big item on the overrun of change, or bid items was subgrade stabilization. Yeah, of 19,000. So those are the big ticket items. Most of the bid item numbers are just, you know, they always are over or under what the actual.
Did we already approve all the change orders?
This is the only change order. These little things that come in.
I mean that, there's eight change orders at the bottom.
Yeah, they're just little proposals that come in over the course of the project, and I don't bring everyone to you until.
What is SWP P P Plan Administration?
Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Administration.
Who do we pay that to?
That would be to the contractor, because it was.
Develop the SWIP.
Yeah, the SWIP. It was to administer the stormwater.
Okay.
And it was not added in the contract originally when it was bid.
Okay.
So we had to add in.
That answers my questions. Gentlemen?
I just wanna make sure that everything that's related to the sewer is getting billed to the city. And a lot of these overages look like they're mostly sewer related.
If you look, there's.
Item 39, removing replaced concrete from sanitary sewer.
That's sewer related.
Right. $1,000.
What we'll do is pull out everything that is sewer related on the final contract amounts and divvy it out accordingly, and it'll.
Okay.
I entertain a motion to approve change order number one.
So moved.
Motion second, call roll please.
Yes.
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 Fire roll, call vote, that's approved. Just sign this contingency, okay, you have anything else Eric?
Just, uh, we talked about doing a ribbon cutting on the Business 50 project.
Yes.
Monday 18.
Yes.
I think that's a go, I'll get you a time, it'll be the afternoon sometime.
Perfect.
So.
Lock it into our calendars so that we all know and. Great project, I'm glad we're completing that one.
Laid asphalt yesterday on one land, we're gonna go today, but two land, so they're Monday, Tuesday, and they said all be wrapped up asphalt wise.
Final lift.
Yeah, final lift.
And then what do they have remaining?
They, they're pretty far along on getting that greenway done down to the south binder, so I think by the end of next week they should have all that tied in. I don't, I don't think there'll be anything, by the time the ribbon cutting comes around, even though we have a Wednesday at the end of the month, I think everything will be tied up, shouldn't be anything.
What's the final date on the bonus?
The 15th.
Of December?
Are they gonna hit it?
They have asphalt due, they have striping. They have guardrail.
Oh, sorry.
Little, piddly little things. I think they'll, they'll.
They're gonna be close?
Yeah. It all depends on the strapping and the guardrail probably. Guardrail's gonna come Monday, but now with asphalt going on, it might be pushed back, but.
How, uh, how much additional have we added to that? I know they've worked hard, but I mean, we've added some stuff that they haven't asked for additional days, right?
A lot.
Yeah.
A lot, yeah, so.
So will that.
If they get it, it'd be well earned.
I mean, is that, I think that would come into play a little bit, you know, if they're on Friday or two, you're there. That's something that we'd look at.
They've been excellent to work with. We've had a few pickups there and there. Overall, yeah, overall. Just been one of the smoothest running jobs that we've had, especially that large.
It's the biggest one we've ever done.
Yeah.
It does, it's turned out real good.
And, you know, really, I haven't heard almost no complaints at all about it. More complaints just talking about putting sidewalk in on Rainbow than I've heard about the entire time about, uh.
I've had a couple, but I mean, we've worked through them and so.
A lot of questions are why is there great changes throughout the project? And what we've explained to them is that that was the issue all along, it's so flat. You know, if you get less than about 2%, your segments will drop out and I get your drop elements and stuff, so we had to put some great changes that. To get, just to get the water to flow off the road, which is the issues we had. It looks nice and I think it's gonna really improve that neighborhood out there.
How's the Vaughn Ford Bridge coming?
They laid the deck, the dirt yesterday. And be just tying in the sides.
It's coming along.
So then they gotta pour the deck after that?
It's, it's, it's pre-arsed deck panels.
Okay.
Yeah, they were drowning them in, they just set panels in and they were putting the drought in it yesterday and getting them tied down to the buttons, so. It's coming along, a lot, most of the dirtwork looks like it's done on the course, I guess. You know, they still have some rock down there. It's coming along. Again, the layman's does a good job of project completion on that, or.
At the end of the month.
Okay.
They don't, they shouldn't have any trouble with that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Guys are doing a great job out there, thank you all very much, we really do appreciate it. So who's gonna be the president, who's gonna be their chair, and who's gonna be vice chair?
Well, we just wanna make.
Jeff?
I'm the vice chair now, but I'm not gonna be the chair, so.
Yeah, it's funny how that works.
Well, see, he missed a meeting when he got vice chair, so.
I didn't have any help not being chair of camp.
Well, it was either me or him, and I didn't want it.
Go, you know which way it flows?
Yeah, you'd think it'd be a little further down below me too, but it never works out that way.
All right, thank you guys, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is 2014 38 Carpet Replacement.
Uh, we are revisiting this from a couple of weeks ago. Basically, I think everyone, with the exception of the prosecuting attorney's office, is interested in carpet. If you guys do decide to award it, we've narrowed that down. We can talk about that in a minute. In front of you are the numbers. If, assuming that there's gonna be some discussion on this, assuming a 50 50 from the offices, from the collector, clerk, and recorders. That would come to 9,293 dollars. The commission's portion would be just over, or just under 25. And then the total would be 34,197. That said, I think Larry wanted to have a discussion about.
Well, Marvin called me yesterday and he couldn't come to the meeting, and I agree with him in theory about some of this. I guess overall that the other elected officials would feel it's the commission's obligation to replace the carpet and painting in the offices. As you take care of all the other facilities around the county that the county owns. And you're asking the office holders to take the money out of their budget to improve their offices.
Marvin donated half. He said he would pay it. I got the minutes. Ah! That's why he's not here. I know why he's not here.
Obviously, we're gonna do whatever you all decide, but we're, we would, we're just asking you to consider that. I don't believe there's been any improvements to the inside of the building since the county took over or moved into it.
Marvin was the one that brought it up, so I think we should take care of it. I don't have problems with it.
I think we should, my personal opinion is we should sit back for a period of time and discuss it. Other items we made to discuss that.
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at some other things we're exploring before we spend a lot of money on redoing these offices, so.
Well, we need it in the auditor's office.
I agree, with that one, I don't have any issue with doing the auditor's office now, I mean, any decisions we were to make on a different option aren't gonna occur before.
You move in and you have to have that, I mean, it's awful up there.
Hey, we need a stain fixed out there. Darryl, can y'all just cut that out and put tile in there? Out there where our coffee stain is. Put a letter D in there so we have the reminder. I mean, seriously, we could put a tile in there, we wouldn't have to replace all the carpet. This is still good carpet. I would sleep on it.
Well, it's been there for so long, I mean, what's, another 30 days gonna hurt, so.
I agree.
I mean, I just.
I would suggest we go ahead and move forward and get the auditor's office done on both the carpet and the painting, because that's the necessary thing that needs to be done before the end of the year. I don't think anybody else has said what they have has to be done before the end of the year. And I think in light of other things we're looking at, we may be better off just waiting a short period and trying to make some other decisions.
On painting and the floor?
Yes.
Clerk's office has been one, there's painted for a while.
Yeah, but, I mean. I think, I just think that if we decide we're gonna paint it, if we make that decision, you guys make that. It's only here in January or early February, it's not gonna have any impact. But if we decide to go down a different route, you know, that's, that's, how much is the total combined painting and carpet? It's a pre.
Thirty-four and, well, depending how you do with the carpet, between 25 and 29.
So you know you're talking almost sixty, talking $60,000 that potentially may have a different place to go.
I wasn't talking about painting all of them, I mean, this don't need to be painted in here. The clerks have just requested it separately before we even did any of this.
Well. I mean, one thing I think we need to consider though too is that we just found out that the windows in the courthouse were installed improperly. And I'm, I'm really wondering if the windows in this building are installed improperly. And, you know, we're still waiting to figure that out, and so before we start painting walls, we might be tearing up a whole lot more stuff to fix windows, so. You know, I think we just have to really think about what step one is and, and, you know, how we get to the finish line, but it's, uh.
So we're gonna paint here either.
Well. Just don't paint around the window.
I can feel the daggers sticking right now. I'm just kidding.
My suggestion would be we should pen this off for.
30 days.
30 days.
Do we wanna go ahead and get the auditors?
Besides the auditors?
Except for the auditors, I think we should get that done.
I'll make a motion, go ahead and do the auditor's office.
Second?
Second.
A motion second, and that's carpet and paint?
Carpet and paint.
Carpet and paint. All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries.
And then we'll punt the others to.
If we can revisit this too before you adjourn, I can get the.
Yeah, I don't think we're rejecting the prices, I think we're just not moving forward on the other offices at this time.
Right, I mean, this is not a rejection, it's not a no. It's just, we need, we need a little more time before we make decisions on spending that kind of money in light of some other things we're exploring that are. Thanks Darryl.
What are they looking at the windows?
Thanks Darryl.
I think they're looking at them soon, but we just haven't had a report yet.
Jen, thanks for your work on this, appreciate it.
I might be cutting drywall and stuff out to get them.
Next item on the agenda is signing of agreement for law enforcement services with St. Martin's.
St. Martin's gets everything.
Basically, they asked for our assistance on snow removal, and there's.
Snow removal?
Snow removal, hey!
No.
Removing cars force.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know you had snow blades.
Basically, if there's any overtime incurred by, by our deputies in the process, they pay it, they're responsible for that. There's a court appearance, it's overtime, they're responsible for that. Again, it's, and it's something that we do for other communities in VAST as well. Jill's reviewed it.
So is there just.
Like anything else, it's limited to the two ordinances that are attached.
So is there a cost associated with enforcement of the no parking areas, or is it just a snow route, or?
It, it lists that basically it's Chris Street and that's just the snow route, and to them, again, anything that we would incur cost wise, they're responsible for.
And this is only during snow events? This isn't, I mean, their ordinances provide that, one of their ordinances provide there's just no parking. Oh, I see what they've done, they've, okay. So it's only during a clearing of the snow event, snowstorm or snow event, okay.
And so.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're agreeing with that.
Yeah, it's high rated. It is, the ordinance 9301 says it's unlawful to park on either side of Christopher Lane in the St. Martin's acre subdivision during a snowstorm or after a snowstorm prior to the complete plowing. And the second one revises ordinance. 200101, what's that one?
So, do you just ticket the car, or do you have a tow?
We're missing an ordinance, Greg.
It's only the ones that are attached to it.
Well, the second one doesn't, the second one relates to a one that's not attached. So we have ordinance 9301, which says either side of Christopher Lane during a snowstorm or till snow's cleared. And then the next one says section three of ordinance 200101 is amended.
I don't think I got the ordinances.
This is, I mean, this.
I looked at the agenda, but I didn't see the ordinances.
So, and I have no objection to what you guys are doing, because we're getting reimbursed for it, I just think we need to have the right ordinances in there.
And I, I don't have that.
Cause 201401 relates to 200101, and the other ordinance is 199301.
Why don't you table until the 15th?
Okay.
That was the.
Sorry.
I mean, I don't really have a problem with it either, but it just seems, it just seems kinda silly that here it's a snow event, and now you're gonna go ticket it, when in actuality, it needs to be towed, it needs to be gotten out.
Well, and some, some of that's, that's, that's their decision, because we, we don't mind towing.
So you ticket it, you contact them, and they call a tow truck and tow it, or how does that work? I'm just asking.
Well, when we go through, when we do ordinance with.
I think you already have that.
I mean, there's, like Russellville would love it if we would, if we would take care of chickens in the jar.
Sure. Right.
Snow removal's a level safety issue, we're willing to do that. I, I don't disagree with the on towing, and maybe that's what that other portion applies to.
I just don't know. Yeah, just bring it to the next meeting.
I mean, it just seems to me like, I mean, I don't really care about giving them a ticket, I'd call a tow truck, I'd have a tow, and let them pay the expense, you know? Your vehicle's parked illegally and get it out of the way.
These have this thing about their revenue stream tickets.
Well, that's for zero.
Well, by state law, it's not. With, it's for us, for the county, any ticket that we write on state ordinance goes to the state. Any ticket that municipal officer, we're serving as municipal officer, anytime we have an contractual relationship, that goes through their board and they do get a revenue stream. Which I'd like to see changed statewide.
So, you ticket it and they get a little bit, and then, then you call for a tow, huh?
As, as small as it is for them, it's not too much, and hopefully they'll cover their own costs on it. For larger municipalities, it's a major revenue stream.
Okay. Let's punt it to the next one. Thanks Greg.
Thank you.
Uh, second and final budget reading to budget adjustment 17.
Seventeen, this is for the 15, uh, 228 dollars for a grant for the tobacco protection.
Health department. I entertain a motion to approve budget adjustment 17.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, call roll please.
Chris.
Yes.
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 Roll call vote, that's approved. Soul Source discussion for HVAC Automation Controls at Cole County Law Enforcement Center. Anyone? Bueller?
What'd you say?
Soul Source.
Soul Source.
This is, this is from Greg. I ran a Soul Source ad in the paper for the HVAC automation control, CNC grip, variety.
Right.
I don't know.
Do we get any response?
No, no response, so the one thing we would just need it to be entered into the minutes, that there's only a single usable source.
All right, I entertain a motion to declare Soul Source after the proper legal requirement's been done.
Second.
All those favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose, motion carries. Thank you Jen, thank you Greg. First reading budget adjustment 18.
Eighteen, it's for the drug court grant, it's for 182,034 dollars. No action today, just so you know, I know it's the end of the year, end of the budget year, we just go ahead and do this and then we carry it forward into next year, so.
First reading budget adjustment 19.
It's for 76,000 dollars, this is the one at Public Works, it's the money that we received from the city earlier this year, we just had not done.
Okay.
Except for the greenway portion.
We'll pen those for 10 days, which means they'll come up on what, the 15th? There you go. JCTV proposal.
I know you guys got the attachment, I was asked to put that on the agenda.
So I received a letter from JCTV asking us if we would be willing to engage them to broadcast our monthly commission meetings. Of course, we don't have monthly commission meetings, but. And I think they proposed that it would be 42,000 dollars a year, plus ancillary expenses if we're necessary.
That's our cost, I didn't get that, I'll guess.
It's the, it's at the very bottom of their proposed agreement. Obviously, we have more than one monthly meeting. And it's, I don't know, I mean, one, we're already streaming them live, so we have publicly shown, and I think that's more accessible than JCTV is in the first place. I can't see spending 42,000 dollars on it, but I think we have to, I, I mean, I think I have to bring that in front of the commission and let you guys have your say on it before we reject it.
I'm not gonna spend 42,000 on it.
I don't, I'm not inclined to either.
All right, I will.
I'm gonna get to people in the county, none of them really have access to JCTV, do they?
Outside the city limits, if you don't have MediaCom cable, you cannot get JCTV.
I was gonna say, it's limited on what it's on, so.
All right, I will, I will talk to Lincoln and explain to them that we're probably not.
Jim, thanks for the offer though.
Yeah. I know what they're doing. They need money. All right. We've plowed through the open agenda, are there any other items to come in open session?
Our meeting at 11, I said shouldn't need to worry about coming over there.
Yeah, you don't need to come over.
I didn't even know we put it on the agenda.
We're, we're going to, when we get to the end of this agenda, if it's close to 11, we're just, we're not gonna recess or anything, we're just gonna go straight over. If it's not close to 11, let me get out of here early today, then we're gonna recess and we're gonna reconvene over there. But we can keep track of minutes. You're welcome.
Just an update on the security with the doors and all of our buildings, I sent you guys an email about that. We've got a meeting set up on 15, and Chris has volunteered to help us with that, so coordinate that.
Thank you.
You guys are welcome if you want to do it.
Okay. Thank you, anything else? Going once, going twice. I entertain a motion to go in the closed session pursuant 610021, sub 3, sub 12, and sub 18.
So moved. Second. Second.
I have a motion second, would you call roll, please?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. By a roll call vote, we'll go into closed session, we'll take a couple of minutes break so we can shut down the electronics and.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thanks, Jeff.